Would our sister family assume the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hold call.
Commissioner Ozias?
Here.
Commissioner Beach?
Here.
Administrator Jones?
Here.
Who's on the list?
Request for obligations to the agenda. We did have Warren, Commissioner Ozias, know her yesterday afternoon that we had planned to have a hearing on the SARC Opportunity Fund discussion, and if we were going to make that date, we had to break the call this week, so we're offering up as a possibility an addition of SID 3D, a notice of hearing to be held in March 29 at 10:30 a.m.
Move to amend the agenda?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comments, any member of the public wishing to make comment on agenda items only?
Does this call the time?
Yeah, come on up, state your name and address. Public comment for agenda items.
Well, is your, uh, Carlsberg Sewer on the agenda?
Are you?
Carlsberg Sewer is on the agenda.
Um, not today. We don't think anything's on for today. That was totally one of... You want to talk about Carlsberg Sewer, you could get it.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody wanting to comment on just agenda items?
Consent agenda. Thank you. Item 1A is approval of vouchers for the week of March 7. Item 1B is approval of minutes for the week of March 7. Item 1C is approval of payroll for the period ending February 29.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports of presentations, Commissioner Beach?
At a opportunity, I attended a meeting in Forbes last week. It was, um, people interested in steelhead fishing on the Olympic Peninsula. In that issue where the, uh, the guides very much in favor of a conversation about the regulations that involved the local community. Lots of guides, very well attended, local guides, felt sorry for the one fellow from WDFW. That fellow should have some support. But all in all, managed quite civilly. I really did appreciate the way it was put together. So it issues the change to a catch and release program, and that will be effective by the end of this year. And the real concern was that this took place at meetings that were literally way, way far away from the Olympic Peninsula. Very few people had a chance to engage, very few people were informed about it, and what would likely occur is an additional meeting. The city of Forbes who sponsored this is quite interested in looking at a mechanism where the minimum, those kind of meetings occur in Forbes, where people get a chance to at least listen and understand.
Commissioner Ozias?
I've got two items to report on this week. On Sunday afternoon, I attended the Clalum Transit's annual employee recognition dinner, which was an excellent event, and they really highlight the transit organization's commitment to safety. And we have one particularly talented Clalum Transit bus driver who will be representing Clalum Transit at the National Bus Rodeo coming up in the next couple of months, so we've got a hometown hero to root for. And a nonofficial assignment that I have is I'm a board member of the Olympic View Community Foundation, which is based in Squim but is looking to reach out to other parts of the county. Last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to go out to Mia Bay and, as a member of that organization, and visit the museum out in Mia Bay, where I have not been, I have not been to that museum for 20 years, and I would just highly encourage anyone who has not been there recently to get their butts out there and check it out, because it's really phenomenal, and it was, it was a reminder to me of what a valuable and unusual resource that is, so I would encourage all of you to stop in the next time you're in Mia Bay. Thank you.
Thanks. Jim?
Nothing for me. Contracts and agreements. Item 2A is waiver of bid requirement and consideration of agreement with PACT Quest Machinery for the purchase of two used pneumatic tire compactors. All this was discussed in work session back on March 7th. Total cost $108,725.20 for two units, total for two units.
Move to approve the waiver?
Second.
Seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 2B is an agreement with Michael and Susan Bonomo for purchase of easement for the Carlsberg Sewer project, as was discussed in work session on March 7th. Total cost $500 and a hook up to the sewer.
Move to approve the agreement?
Second.
Seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Administration?
Item 3A is resolution calling for a hearing to be held at 10:30 a.m. on March 29 regarding the proposed amendments to the Comprehensive Park and Recreation Master Plan 2016 to 2026, all as was discussed in work session on March 7.
Move to approve the resolution?
Second.
Seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And item 3B is a notice of hearing to be held at 10:30 a.m. March 29 regarding the request from Park and Recreation District 1 for an auditorium air handling unit, emergency replacement unit at the Squim Aquatic and Recreation Center, as was discussed in work session back in November.
Move to approve the notice of hearing?
Second.
Seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Budget. Item 4A is approval of budget modifications for the week of February 29.
Move to approve, question modifications for the week of October 29?
Second.
Seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 4B is a notice that the following supplemental appropriations will be adopted by resolution on March 29. Under Health and Human Services Funding from the Washington State Department of Health for Immunization Program, new revenue of $1,888. Under Health and Human Services Environmental Health Grant Funding from the Washington State Department of Health for Pollution ID and Correction, new revenue of $7,815. And under, and grant funding from the Washington State Department of Health for On-Site Septic System Management Program, new funding of $68,220. Under Health and Human Services Operations Funding from the Washington State Department of Health for the Women, Innocents, and Children Program, new funding of $6,850. Under Sheriff's Operations, Operation Stone Guard Grant reimbursment, new funding of $2,744. Reimbursement from the Olympic Peninsula Safety Communications Alliance Network Operations Budget for full-time radio technician position, new funding of $46,500. And finally, under Deissue Extension Funding from Solid Waste Division and Health and Human Services for Managing Department of Ecology Grant, new funding of $50,603. These are the supplemental appropriations.
Move to approve the notice of supplemental appropriations?
Second.
Seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 4C is resolution calling for a hearing to be held at 10:30 a.m. March 29 for consideration of the following debatable emergencies. Under Sheriff's Operations, payment to equipment rental revolving to replace the sheriff's office patrol vehicle that was totaled in a 2015 accident, $7,500. Under Sheriff's Geomental, to fund the increased cost of inmate medical services in the amount of $6,541. Under Health and Human Services Homelessness Task Force, the 2015 unspent funds of $220,000. And under Olympic Peninsula Safety Communications Alliance Network Operations, to fund a full-time radio technician position in the amount of $46,500.
Move to approve the resolution, calling for a hearing?
Second.
Seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, committee boards, committee of development, or public boards, we have two public hearings in 20 minutes, so at this time, if there are any members of the public wishing just to make general comment to the board, this will be your time. Jerome, and anybody else, on anything, any topic, let us have it.
Carlsberg Sewer bus on the agenda?
It was on yesterday's agenda.
$500 each week?
Okay, well, I don't know which is, I go along with township line route. I wanted to congratulate you guys for your change on the inspector's contract, the construction inspector's contract for the Clalum County. And I left a message with Trish last week, I hope we got to you guys, about what we did when we built the courthouse. We hired a retired gentleman by the name Frank Leslie for next to nothing, and he just did an absolutely perfect job, so I would hope you consider soliciting that, for that sort of person to do that contract, should you do it. Another thing I wanted to mention was a letter to the editor that I wrote that day, kind of a lot of concern. I've seen different meetings of different agencies where a proponent for a project gets up and speaks for an hour to glossy posters and hired lawyers and paid consultants, and it just makes a glamorous presentation of your proposal. And then the people of whom might oppose a project are given three minutes each. Well, this letter to the editor, I assume is correct, but it's something that you certainly should look into, and the hearing on that cell tower outside of Squim. According to the letter to editor, the moment got all sorts of time to make a very good presentation for this project, and when each of the people opposing it were just given three minutes. And I guess I mentioned, happened in the past, how I appreciate your policy here, to let people talk longer than three minutes. But I really think that you should take a look at your hearing examiner's procedures to see if maybe the hearing examiner should not have the three-minute limit for people wanting to talk on something that's very near and dear for them. It's really hard to even begin to put together a coherent presentation in three minutes, and if you arbitrarily cut somebody off at the end of three minutes, it's really telling that person you don't get a get out about what they're saying, even if he's in the middle of a good thought that's really pertinent to the proceeding. It's my opinion not to let them down, so I would encourage you, maybe if it's related to the procedures in that term, if that's what the hearing is true.
Probably one is somewhat true. We're going through the hearing examiner, you know, the new contract and taking bids, and so that could be something that we look at as to how he's hearing examiner, it's basically their corporate, as I understand it, and they get to set the rules, so I don't know that the commissioners have, I don't know if we've set any rules for the hearing examiner, but if we have, we'll take a look at them.
He's your employee.
He's our employee, but he's judicial, so.
No, that's possible. You can set.
Yeah, we can certainly look at, as we look, as we go through the proposals, I would say that'd be one question the board could probably ask, as I remember their hearings. I agree with you, it upsets the public when they're cut off, there's no doubt, and we've seen that time and time again. We have never, in my 15-plus years, ever had a time room or instituted a three-minute warning. We have probably times commissioners who maybe cut people off just because they're arguing with themselves for so long, and it comes to a point where you can't argue anymore, but we've never, never had a big time room here, or can't see the clock, so.
Well, especially on a fairer level, if we're calling to get over time limit, and even if there's 20 opponents, splitting it up into 20, 3, 23-minute sessions, I think it just doesn't work.
Right, I agree, and most people will probably, there'll be a few people that'll go five, six, seven minutes, a lot of people just walk up and say, hey, this person spoke for me, I concur. A lot of people don't want to speak for three minutes, so you've been here, little people will go on and on and make their point, and then the next five people just come up and say, I agree with, you know, I agree with what Ron just said, so it ebbs and flows and it all comes out in the wash, so I think we can have Jim take a look at that as the bids coming in. I think the appropriate case would be, as Ron suggested, either we create an ordinance imposing rules of behavior we want to see and then incorporate that into the contract, or just simply whoever does get our bid, as commissioners expressed an interest, they'd really like it to be one primary person, you know, talk to them informally, so we can certainly look at either of those cases.
Okay.
Thanks, good point, thank you very much.
We'll take, we'll take a look at those policies and see if that does or doesn't. Yeah, so we'll take a look at it, and the one thing you can do is when you meet with the people that bid, you know, the guy, just give them a copy of the policy. See what it says.
Wilson?
Good morning, gentlemen, Dale Wilson, Mayor of Port Angeles. This is in reference to the impending Carlsberg Sewer project. Have not looked at the plans in great detail, but I have noticed some suggested additions that you might want to put into the budget, and that would include our hydrologist to study the effects of possible sewer pipes bursting as they cross the Dungeons River, and give you an idea of what the cost of cleanup would be if we did have that new and expected earthquake that's about 65 years old if you run down. So if we do have a pipe break and dump all that sewage into the dungeons further, I think we need a hydrologist to report on the possible effects and cleanup cost. Perhaps you might want to consider a geologist in case they run into another mammoth out there in that area, and imagine how long that would hold up the project if there was thought of mammoth or other geological finds. And an archaeologist in case you find graves out there, of course, you know, there are, there's a history of that when we found the ancient graveyard down here at the graveyard, and that created quite enough people in the community, so you might want to consider having somebody on hand to, you know, might find the bones of somebody that were murder victims, but they also might find an ancient burial ground, which would create some delay in the project and also more experience. Also, you might want to consider money for downtown if the project is stopped for any of these occasions. And finally, I'd like to suggest that the county employ an outside project manager for a couple of reasons. Number one, they will have the expertise for such a project as this, they will have errors and admissions insurance to cover any problems, and the other thing is, if there are problems that occur and we are managing in-house, then if I cover an error of design or something, they might want to cover each other's behinds, and you may not get all the information back that you need. So if we have an outside project manager, not only will they have the expertise to cover a project of this size, but they'll also have errors and admissions insurance, which would put any cost overruns or any problems on the backs of the contractor and the project manager, and any other way that you could, that is, one would put any errors and missions and additional cost overruns on the back of the taxpayers, and I think we all want to agree with that. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to make general comment? If not, then about 10 minutes before the public hearing, so there's no pressure to take a recess for 10 minutes. Come back after a two public hearing, because one is declaring vehicles in the sheriff's office as surplus, and another is a proposed amendment to the Clalum County Code, Chapter 23.03. So 10 minutes.
We'll come back in this session, we have two public hearings. The first is a consideration of a resolution declaring vehicles in the sheriff's office as surplus and ordering their sale at public auction, so representative of the sheriff's office is here. Alice, do you have anything?
To add? No.
No, that's it, that's your staff report. I actually worked up to this already, so. Any questions of Alice before we open the public hearing? No objection, we'll open the public hearing, there's nobody signed up. Is there a new member of the public wishing to make comment regarding the declaring the vehicles in the sheriff's office as surplus and ordering their sale at a public auction? Seeing no one rushing to the microphone, just the board's wishes.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
So moved and seconded, just for the record, I'll enter, let's enter the vehicles into question. 1990 Toyota pickup, 2004 Expedition, and a 1977 Chevrolet ambulance to be declared surplus and sold at public auction. I suspect a 77 Chevrolet ambulance would be a hot item. So it's moved and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. An motion to approve the resolution?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the sheriff's office to dispose of surplus vehicles by sale at public auction.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Minimum bid will be $500, I certainly hope you get a $500 bid for the ambulance, maybe the other two certainly will be. It's moved and seconded to accept the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Just curious, how did the sheriff's office come in contact with a 1977 ambulance?
I do not know. It had been taken to our possession, it was first used for search and rescue, sitting up at the shop for a period of time.
So somebody wants it for $500. Next, we have a public hearing on a consideration of proposed amendments to Clalum County Code, Chapter 23.03, General Park Fairgrounds Rules and Regulations, and we did work session this a couple of weeks ago, Bruce, but do you have anything else you want to add before we open the public hearing?
I have a brief staff report.
Oh, just so Bruce would be, I'm sorry.
We got lots going on, so we're giving out responsibility right now.
Told you you have it.
I do, actually. Just a brief one, the purpose of the proposed ordinance revision is to update several areas of the Clalum County Code, Chapter 23.03, which pertaining to specifically our parks and recreation master plan and fairgrounds master plan. And it addresses issues that happen to date, and one of the main things that this addresses a couple of issues that have been rubbed away, we're going to clarify those a little bit, and both of these were vetted through the Department and Fair Advisory Board. First is under Section 1, subsection 020, under definitions, we are adding Thompson Road and Eagle Point properties, as those are recent acquisitions, and we remove, under H, Jesse Cook's Scriven kennel bar, which is under the purview of the road department. Section 2, subsection 040, under camping, we're going to add occupancy of the campsite for overnight camping or temporary purposes, i.e. electric vehicle charging could get in a rest and shall require a visitor to pay an appropriate camping fee. Issue there was we had people pulling into camping spots and they weren't paid for, and people were coming to rent those spots, and there were issues trying to find people to get their vehicles out. Next would be to, under number 5, remove the first sentence in its entirety and add to sentence number 8, steep below for exceptions, and then we're adding, under E, Thompson Road and Eagle Point, and under H, remove Jesse Cook's Scriven for consistency. Section 3, 070, dogs, cats, and other pets and livestock, we're going to revise that heading to read generally animals, or quote animal, clean that up a little bit. Under number 3, we're going to add on all parklands with the exception of designated areas within Rockland Farm County Park and Clalum County Fairgrounds. Under number 6, we're going to add in this entirety, no person shall intentionally feed a tractor artificially sustaining wildlife in Clalum County Parklands. Feeding of indigenous wildlife is prohibited in all Clalum County parklands unless otherwise posted. Under section 4, I'm just hitting the highlights, there are other minor changes in this, but under section 4, we're going to add, under E, horses shall be led with the use of a halter from the horse barns to the arenas. Horses in horseback riding are not permitted in any other area of the fairground. We're going to remove, under number 2, riders shall ride their horse in a walking gait only, and add to number 2, while O'Neil County approved horse trails, riders shall slow their horses to walk upon meeting of the trail users. No galloping, racing, or jumping allowed on these same trails. And also, under number 2, at the fairgrounds, riders shall ride at a speed and safety level appropriate for events taking place inside the arenas. Outside the arenas, riders shall maintain a walking gait at all times, and this is obviously for safety-related issues from a couple of incidents. Section 5, just minor things there, addition of Thompson Road for metal detection, and finally, under section 6, subsection 140, we're going to add, under number 3, planting any vegetation in parklands without a prior approval of the department, prohibited and subject to immediate removal by the department. The only other modifications, as I stated earlier, were those in the orders pertaining to formatting and numbering and word changes and that sort of thing, so they were fairly minor. We did on, earlier, receive one comment, and could you give them a copy of that? We received one comment pertaining to one of the revisions that we suggested under section 4, and Bruce has a copy of that, for each of you, and our proposed revised wording. And the comment reading is the following. The ordinance on the park rules has some problems with section 4, subsection 120, under E, horses are led with a ride on a halter while showing at the fairgrounds between classes. Halter, in his comment, is a halter would be on from the horse that runs saddles or running halter class. The easiest way to fix that would be to add the word "or" arrival after halter. The other issue is that the ordinance would eliminate pony ride because animals are moved through prohibited areas and the ride itself is a non-horse commended area. So our proposed revision to our earlier proposed revision would state, horseback riding is permitted at the fairgrounds only in warm-up, only in the warm-up arena, horse show arena, grandstand arena, the road between the horse show and grandstand arenas, and the arena between the warm-up and horse show arenas. Horses shall be led with the use of a halter or ride on from the horse barns to the arenas. Horses in horseback riding are not permitted in any other areas of the fairgrounds unless authorized in advance by the fair manager or the director. In summary, we would recommend that the board approve the proposed modifications, which includes Mr. Tate's comment to Clalum County Code, Chapter 23.03, barring any revisions that might come up as a result of this hearing. Thank you.
Any questions for Joel or Bruce? No questions, there's no objection, we'll open the public hearing. Everybody has signed up, testified, or any member of the public wishing to make comment regarding this public hearing, this ordinance change? Yep, Ed, point up.
I didn't see your list over there.
No, I'm sorry. And I didn't see your hand.
Good morning, Commissioner, that's the Olympic View Council on the Clalum Bay, regarding this ordinance. When I was following this through its process, I understood it was about that planning stuff in the park and also the wildlife, but then, now seeing this product, I see a lot of loose ends, and actually brings the question, why aren't we even actually making some changes to other parts of the ordinance? So that's what I wanted to go over today. I am pleased to see that Eagle Point property is included in the ordinance, that's pretty quick updating of the ordinance. I do have concern with section 2, section 1040, campaign, in regards to the chain under super slipper subsection 4, occupancy of campsite. Understand his explanation, but, you know, what's going to be the definition here of resting? Somebody going to pull into that spot and they didn't pay a fee, and 10 minutes later they get nailed for violation of the ordinance? This creates a real interesting dilemma on the citizens' use of the county parks, especially using that term resting. I can understand vehicle charging and picnicking, because it's a little bit longer term, but resting, I mean, I myself use Pillar Point for resting, in a sense, driving all the way in, it's a nice break, it's a stop there and get out and catch your breath, so I think this creates a very ambiguous use of that term resting, and I object to that. With that, though, said, moving over, I would ask that under the Pillar Point County Park, under page 3 there, where it's prohibited overnight camping, you know, we really need to address Pillar Point, because it is a camping, a developed campsite, and it hasn't been that way for a while, and we've had some problems there with other entities utilizing that facility, quasay, I've talked to parks and folks about this, and we need to get Pillar Point back into play, and I think that needs to be addressed, I think this should be updated, and off-season special use permit, I don't know what a member of the public's going to understand that to me. Moving over to page 4. Moving over to page 4, no person shall intentionally feed or track, under 6, there are three. So, this brings up another interesting dilemma about the young child that accidentally throws some breadcrumbs out there on the ground. And I know we look at that as trivial, but I see this happen all the time with passing regulations prohibiting. And a grand example is a very young child that decided to surf cast off of the beach there between Clowland Bay and Sea Q and managed to wheel in a 25-pound king through the kelp bed. Got him all short, and fish and wildlife shows up and nails the young man. They, you know, they've used reason, they released the fish and got it. But this is, I see this all the time with young children. They don't know the regulation, and what are we going to get into here, putting these prohibitions in place, somebody throwing out breadcrumbs or something? And it just creates that aura of, wow, what is reasonable, okay? And lastly, but not least, is on page 5 there, let's see, oh, under Section 5, Section 121, 120, and the coinage thing. This is really interesting. Why isn't Eagle Point included in a list to obtain a permit to do coinage? I'm kind of curious why that didn't get included in that list, so those are my comments, and thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody else wish to make a comment for the board? Have any comments, Joel?
I do. First one pertaining to the resting, we're resting at Salt Creek, and Mr. Bowen used Pillar Point as an example. First off, Salt Creek is a campground. The sites we're specifically talking about are a camp, camping, RV, tent sites. We have acres and acres of day-use parking at Salt Creek, so I don't really see that as an issue there. Pillar Point, on the other hand, is a day-use facility, with the exception of, as he spoke about, offseason camping, which we do have, and which several county residents use during the offseason. The other thing is that, is that as of about four years ago, or five years ago now, the, our park managers can no longer issue citations. We can't ticket anybody. What we have to do if we have an issue is contact the sheriff's department, and they are the ones that arrive on-site and do that. Typically, an instance like this would not require us to call the sheriff's department. So, we, our park manager is very, very good at communicating and working with people, and these kind of issues are, with the rare exception, they're worked out right there on-site. But as I stated, it's important to us that if someone has observed the site, is coming to the site expecting it to be open, they don't need to come up and see if someone's charging their electric car and they've gone on a hike up the strip of the peak, which occurs. So, and that's a whole other issue that we have to deal with, and trying to keep people, give them what they expect when they got there. I mentioned Pillar Point offseason camping. The feeding, we had issues with folks, and I understand about, Mr. Bowen's concerned about children feeding, you know, with the breadcrumbs and that sort of thing. I, we understand that that happens. Our issue was with people specifically bringing bags of peanuts. We had people that bring seeds into the parks and they scatter them for the wildlife. Well, we get notches weeds from the seeds and the wildflowers. The feeding of squirrels in particular at Rockville Hill was where the issue originated. It causes a lot of difficulties with park users by attracting different types of wildlife, and that was specifically what the reason was for. I know people go, for example, to Duganess Landing, and they'll bring a little bread with them and throw it to the sea gulls. And we're not going to stop all that, we're not trying to. What we don't want people doing is bringing the things that are invasive into the parklands. That's, that's the specific thing. And as far as enforcing that regulation, we don't have, at our day-use facilities, we don't have someone there that's going to be ticketing or citing somebody for feeding animals. And with regards to including Eagle Point on the metal detection, I guess it could be included. Our thought, I think, was that we just, given the nature of that site, the location of that site, didn't feel, I mean, it's certainly going to be done, but I don't see the reason for it. There's no, I don't know, maybe you have a better reason for including it or not including it, I just.
No, it just, there has been no past use. I don't know what they, that anybody would find anything at that site.
Yeah. I mean, if that was something that you felt should be included, I mean, we can't speak directly as to it shouldn't be, but we didn't see a reason why it should.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Board's wishes.
I move to approve the proposed amendments to Clowland County Code, 23.03.
Second. That also includes the comment with regard to horseback, Section E.
That was my intent. So, let me revise my motion perhaps. I'd like to move to approve the proposed amendments, including revision, let's see, what section is this? Horseback, ready?
Second. It's moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? The only one I'd make a comment is, I think it's, it's pretty traditional. If you're a parent, you're in a park, and a deer or raccoon or squirrel walks by and you have your kid, throw a tiny little piece of the sandwich you might be eating, I certainly hope the intent of the rule is to not to avoid that. I think that's something that every parent shares a special moment, sharing with their kids, their love of wildlife and the outdoors, and I don't think the air corner of a sandwich from a two-year-old to a deer or a raccoon or a squirrel is probably going to lead to overpopulation. So, I hope that you mostly focus on maybe spreading of food, large amounts, but if you, when your ranger sees a kid throwing part of their potato chips or lunch, we all know, we all know we're not supposed to do it, there's signs in every park, but honestly, show me a parent that hasn't experienced that moment with their kid, and I'll probably show you a parent that never took their kid to the outer doors. So, that's my comment on that. I don't want to see the county somehow regulate that moment, because that was a special moment that I shared with my kids. Certainly understood the rules, you don't, but if a three-year-old says, Dad, can I throw my little piece of sandwich at the raccoon? My dad's going to say, no. No, you can't. Rule's safe.
That was never the intent. It was just specifically to address one major issue we have, people actually literally going to bring bags and stuff.
And that, that's a different, that's a whole other, all the racks, so. Truth be told, I probably still do it myself every now and then, so. It's moved and seconded. Any further comments, questions?
My thanks to the committee, they worked on this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good point was raised, I think, for Commissioner Peach, and you guys, Pillar Point, Joel, Jim, somewhat underutilized because of the lack of services, and I know that's been the issue for many, many years, but if District 3 Commissioner someday wants to take that project on, I think the county would be well served to figure out a way to utilize that park in a better area and in a better way, but.
But the water system was the main reason for it being taken out of service. Just mainly the lack of the fishing, because in the, in the good old days, you know, when fishing was just booming around here, that place was packed and used, it was just crazy. We had a seasonal worker that would come out there and work, so a lot of things changed since then, as you obviously know, but.
Some things would be worth it, though, I mean, a water system may be a very great place, just takes money and permitting, but, yeah. I think there's a lot of people nowadays that would go camp there, still launch their boats, still use that water access, and want to camp overnight. It's, to me, it's just been kind of underutilized for years, but it's not made a difference.
Great place for crabbing. Oh, yeah, I got that to say.
I think that raises a good point. That should probably be looked at again. What could we do to, because that's just phenomenal, phenomenal location. Every time I drive in there, there's nobody there, and it's, you know, it's like. Food for thought, that's up to Bill if he wants to work with you guys. Any other public comment? Ed?
I'm not sure. I would have found it beginning, but it ended.
I'd like a lawyer to get paid by the words.
Ed Bowen, Peter Fox, one more. So, on the 7th of March, you held a work session regarding the Veterans Relief Fund ordinance. So, I've studied that a little bit, and there are a few reservations I have about this. I need to go back a little bit. There's only one commissioner still on the board that addressed the ordinance about changing it over a while back, and I have reservations then, because the Veterans Relief Fund itself is controlled by the RCW, and I brought up to that, at that point, the fact that the organization outside the county that manages this needs to be bonded, and that was never addressed during that process. So, I put that back on the record today. As we move forward and we give more oversight and all to that organization, I do believe the intent of the RCW needs to be upheld, and at least to address this accountability issue, they should be bonded. I've been a little bit embarrassed by the process so far, even with this ordinance change that I still don't believe we have a veteran at large or a veterans representative at large on that board, on that committee, because the committee's not transparent on the county's website. It's a standalone function. The records are not online like any other committee with the county, so I have reservations there. And there are some particular aspects within the ordinance change that I'm going to have some concerns with, and one is particularly the right and the ability and the method that a veteran who applies for the Veterans Relief Fund appeals a no decision. I think there's some significant flaws in this ordinance change proposal that I'm going to be looking into very closely, but I think it sets veterans up for lack of due process, I would call it. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make a comment? Seeing no one, no executive session. Ordinance is the Board of Health, with the Board of Health Saturday at 1:30. So, if there's nothing else before the board, we'll end the meeting at 1:30 on the Board of Health. One o'clock, two more board commissioners will be on the KOMV radio show, and we'll continue this week. This week's meeting to next Monday morning at 9:00 AM. There's no objection. Objection. Thanks. With our assessor, Pam, we just seem to pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call.
Commissioner Ozias?
Here.
Commissioner Peach?
Here.
Administrator Jones?
Here.
Request for articulations to the agenda. We did have one, Commissioner Ozias noted yesterday afternoon, that we had planned to have a hearing on the, on the SARC Opportunity Fund discussion, and if we were going to make that date, we had to bring the call this week, so we're offering up as a possibility in addition of, as Item 3D, a notice appearing to be held, March 29, at 10:30 AM.
Moves the program, and that will be effective as the end of this year. And the real concern was that this took place at meetings that were literally way, way far away from the Olympic Peninsula. Very few people had a chance to engage, very few people were informed about it, and what would likely occur is an additional meeting. The city of Forks, who sponsored this, is quite interested in looking at a mechanism where the minimum, those kind of meetings occur in Forks, where people get a chance to at least listen and understand.
Commissioner Ozias?
I've got two items to report on this week. On Sunday afternoon, I attended the Clowland Transit's annual employee recognition dinner, which was an excellent event, and they really highlight the transit organization's commitment to safety. And we have one particularly talented Clowland.
Who to amend the agenda?
Second? Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Public comments? Any member of the public wishing to make a comment on agenda items, all in? Yes, sir.
Will this call the time?
Yeah, come on up, state your name and address. Public comment for agenda items.
Well, is your, Carlsberg Sewer Legion, are you? Carlsberg Sewer Legion?
Not today. I don't think any examples are today, that was totally wrong. If you want to talk about Carlsberg Sewer, you could have given it to me. Okay. Anybody wanting to comment on just agenda items? Consider agenda.
Thank you. Transit bus driver who will be representing Clowland Transit at the National Bus Rodeo coming up in the next couple of months, so we've got a hometown hero to root for. And a non-official assignment that I have is, I'm a board member of the Olympic View Community Foundation, which is based in Squim, but is looking to reach out to other parts of the county. Last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to go out to Nia Bay and, as a member of that organization, and visit the museum out in Nia Bay, where I've not been, I have not been to that museum for 20 years, and I would just highly encourage anyone who has not been there recently to get their butts out there and check it out, because it's really phenomenal. And, and it was, it was a reminder to me of what a valuable and unusual resource that is.
Item 1A is approval of vouchers for the week of March 7. Item 1B is approval of minutes for the week of March 7. Item 1C is approval of payroll for the period ending February 29.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second? Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports and presentations, Commissioner Peach.
Had an opportunity to attend a meeting in Forks last week. It was people interested in steelhead fishing on the Olympic Peninsula. And that issue were the guides very much in favor of a conversation about the regulations that involved the local community. Lots of guides, very well attended, local guides, I'm sorry for the one fellow from WDFW, that fellow should have had some support, but all in all, managed quite civilly. I really did appreciate the way it was put together. So, it issues the change to a catch and release.